Let me get situated here. So are all the commissioners here, buddy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, all of your commissioners are here.
Okay, all right. All the regular meeting, the Carmel by the Sea Plan Commission to Order. Can we have roll call?
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Bolton?
Here.
Commissioner Delves?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Chair LaPage?
Here. I want to welcome everybody to our meeting today. It's too nice of a day to be inside, but here we are. Okay. First item on the agenda are the public appearances. Anyone from the public may address the planning commission at this time on any matters of public concern which are not on our agenda tonight. These matters will not receive comment tonight, but they may be put on our agenda for future review. So I see a hand up over here. The nine four one is the last three digits. Would you like to speak to the planning commission about matters which are not on our agenda tonight?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair LaPage.
Oh, okay. Hi, Christie.
Hi, how are you? Good afternoon, Chair LaPage, planning commissioners. This is Christie Hollenbeck from Stop Cell Towers in Carmel Neighborhood. I attended a wireless meeting in Monterey last night, and unfortunately, it did not go well. We are concerned that the same thing will happen here because Monterey is getting advice from the same telecom attorney that is advising Carmel. The citizens group in Monterey, which is similar to our group, is very unhappy that many of their recommendations were not included in staff's draft ordinance. We strongly request that the public and our group be given copy, a copy of the ordinance that staff and their attorneys have drafted this week. We need adequate time, at least thirty days, to review their document and make comments before the September fourteenth wireless meeting. We also request that our resident funded attorney, Andrew Campanelli, be given time to explain his ordinance and respond to staff's draft ordinance at the September fourteenth meeting. I strongly request that the city of Carmel use Mr. Campanelli's ordinance as an urgency ordinance to protect our city while we work together to create an ordinance both the city and residents are happy with. We need protection in place so that we don't feel we have to rush this important process. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the planning commission on any matters which are of mis- concern, which are not on our agenda tonight?
Chair LaPage, I would like to say something if I could.
Is this, is this an announcement?
Uh, yeah, it was just, I just wanted to recognize Shirley Moon for her.
Can we just, can we, can we finish this up?
Oh, yeah.
Now, and then, and then on announcements, I'm gonna let you make that announcement.
Okay.
All right, we'll just get the public appearances taken care of, and then we'll move on to that item next. Okay, is there anyone else here from the public that would like to address the planning commission on any matters which are not on our agenda tonight?
Chair LaPage, I'd like to say something.
Okay, who's speaking?
Hi, I'm Dale Byrne.
Dale, okay, Dale, go ahead.
I'm speaking today as President of Carmel Cares, which is an official city support group committed to keeping Carmel beautiful, safe, and inviting. We've recently made a commitment to assist neighborhood groups to underground their power lines, working with our project manager from the Wallace Group. We've, we, who has been instrumental in working with groups in Pebble Beach over the past few years. We've submitted an application for a fully funded project to underground power from the Pebble Gate to Ocean Avenue. Another group has been formed to underground on scenic from Ocean to Eighth Avenue. We're excited by this concept, which enables residents to make donations to Carmel Cares, who will assist in managing the projects and paying PG&E. We believe this innovative approach will simplify the projects for PG&E and significantly reduce the overall cost to our residents, plus allow anyone to support these projects. We have received very positive comments from Mayor Potter and others on this undergrounding initiative. Installing wireless equipment on power poles in residential neighborhoods are neither beautiful, safe, or inviting. Carmel Cares has assisted the Stop Cell Towers and Carmel Neighborhoods group in raising funds to hire Andrew Campanelli, who has provided the city with the best practices, strong wireless and defensible ordinance that allows Carmel residents, planning commissioners, our city council, and others to become objectively educated on this complex subject. The STOP group is to be commended for their hard work. In relation to the ordinance process that's playing out with this commission, we agree that the residents should have at a minimum a full month to review the ordinance suggested by the city's attorneys prior to discussing it in a meeting. These documents are complex, and the attorneys in this field are very busy. We are now thirty days out from the meeting where this ordinance will be discussed, and other than a public meeting where the commissioners were asked what style of cell tower they would prefer, we have seen nothing from the city attorneys. Carmel Cares would also like to compliment the Building and Planning Department under the guidance of Brandon Swanson, which has taken the initiative on so many vital projects, both in terms of systems, which we saw last month, as well as updating critical documents and processes that can help to provide access to critical information and protect the character and the set ex of this amazing place. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dale. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding municipal issues which are not on our agenda tonight? Okay, I don't hear anybody speaking up, don't see any hands up. So I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that'll be the announcements. And I believe Commissioner Allen has an announcement she'd like to make.
Thanks, Chair LaPage. I just wanted to commend Shirley Moon for her tireless efforts in picking up garbage along the beach and the beach walk. And just remind everybody that if you can spare some time to volunteer, please do. It, it really helps to make everything just more beautiful, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and typically can be passed in one motion, but any item that's on the consent agenda can be, the public or commissioners can request that that be pulled for further discussion. So we have three items on the consent agenda tonight. The first one is a design study. It's a DS two-two dash two-three-five. This is the Greg project. It is a consideration of an amendment to design study approval. DS two-one two-two zero zero for revisions to previously approved windows and doors at Santa Rita Street, the adoption of the planning commission regular meeting minutes from the July thirteenth meeting. And the third item is acceptance of the community plan and building department activity report for July twenty twenty-two. Is there anyone from, do any of the commissioners have any questions or corrections or anything they want pulled for further discussion? Is there anyone from the public that want any of these items pulled for further discussion? Or do they have any questions regarding any of these items? Okay, I don't see any hands or hear anybody. So I'm gonna make a motion that we accept items one, two, and three on the consent agenda.
I'll start.
Okay, the motions are made and seconded. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Delves?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Motion is carried. Okay. The next order of business tonight are the public hearings. And the first item on our public hearing is Eureka Plaza. The applicant has requested that this be continued. So because it had, this is last minute by them, there wasn't time to really public notices, so it's still on our agenda, but we have to open it up for comments. But the comments are only, are only to be related to the continuation, not to the project. We're not going to be speaking about the project this evening. We're just going to be speaking about the continuation. So having said that, this is the, this is design review two-zero dash three-five-zero. It's Eureka Plaza. This is consideration of a preliminary concept review for Eureka Plaza for the construction of approximately twenty-three thousand thirty-five square foot, two-story mixed-use building and twelve apartment units and a nine thousand seven hundred and seven, nine thousand seventy-six square foot commercial space and approximately a fifteen thousand square foot basement containing twenty-seven below ground. Parking space is located at the southwest corner of Fifth Avenue and Dolores in the service commercial district. Okay, does staff have any comments on this before I open up to the public?
No, Mr. Chair, I think you encapsulated it well. I guess I would just suggest that you start like typical meeting, just start with the applicant and see if they have any comments on their request for continuance and then go to the public.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I will ask the applicant if they'd like to make any comments. Mr. Mitchell, did you want to make some comments?
Hello, no, nothing substantial, just to thank the planning commission for their time in reviewing the submission, as well as Brandon and Evan and the rest of the team at the city. Apologize, but we've had some feedback that we want to incorporate into the plans and think it would be prudent to consider the plans further rather than be heard in today's planning commission meeting. Apologies again for any inconvenience this has caused, but we think it's for the best.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And that's, that's the only member of your team that wants to speak to the planning commission about this? You?
Yes, just myself.
All right, thank you. Okay, then I will open it up to the public for any comments they may have. Just remind you, your pub, your comments would be limited to the continuation and not the design of the building. Are there any members from the public that would like to address the planning commission at this time regarding the Eureka Plaza app continuation? Okay, I don't see any, don't hear anybody. Okay. Do the commissioners have any comments regarding the continuation? Okay. See any comments? I'm going to make a motion that we continue this project. Do we need to continue to a date certain?
No, Mr. Chair, I think we should continue it to a date uncertain. We'll renotice it for everyone, knowing that we have the wireless ordinance on September meeting. I think that'd be a heavy lift for the commission to do both in the same meeting. So we'll, we'll continue to a date uncertain if you're okay with that, and we will renotice so the public's well aware of when it's coming back.
Okay, so I'm making a motion that we continue to sign them to a date uncertain. Wait a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bolton, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Delves?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. Motion to continue this item is carried. Okay, the next item on the public hearings is another design study, is a design study. This is DS two-one dash two-nine-one. This is the Pabujiyan project. This is consideration of a final design study and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of a one thousand three hundred and twenty-four square foot, single story residence and attached carport and the construction of a one thousand four hundred and seventy-three square foot, two-story residence, a two-hundred square foot detached garage, and a one thousand forty-six square foot attached accessory dwelling units located on scenic three southwest of Ocean in the single family residential zone. It's also in the archaeological significance zone overlay and the beach and riparian overlay and the coastal commission appeal jurisdiction overlay. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair LaPage. Give me just one moment, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay. So before you this afternoon is the final design study for the Pabujiyan project. It is located on scenic three southwest of Ocean Avenue. This is a four thousand square foot lot, has an existing, uh, single-story residence with an attached carport. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing residence and build a new two-story residence with a detached garage in the front setback. The primary residence would be on the main level, uh, and then an ADU is proposed below at the garden level. So the planning commission originally reviewed this project back in February at the concept review. The commission did accept the concept design study with conditions, uh, and they included removing the interior staircase between the upper and lower levels, changing the height of the roof to respond to some view concerns by the neighbors to the east, and the removal of an interior wood burning fireplace. So the applicant has revised the floor plan to eliminate the interior staircase, so there's no access between the upper and lower level from inside the proposed residence. A washer and dryer has been accommodated at the main level, and the laundry room that was previously proposed has remained in the lower level. So with these modifications, uh, the ADU did get, the accessory dwelling unit did get a little bit larger. State law states that local agencies without an ordinance are subject to certain provisions of the ADU law, which include ADUs are limited to fifty percent of the floor area of the primary dwelling, um, or at least eight hundred square feet. So fifty percent of the proposed house is seven hundred and thirty-six square feet. Currently, the ADU is proposed at one thousand forty-six square feet, uh, so it will need to be reduced, uh, when they apply for a building permit. The second item was the lowering of the roof. So the mansard roof is outlined in red. The applicant has lowered this roof by three inches, uh, in response to the planning commission's direction. So the mansard roof is a three and twelve pitch. At the concept review, the south, um, on the south elevation, the ridge height was sixteen feet five inches, uh, and it has been now reduced to sixteen feet two inches. Uh, the third item is the wood burning fireplace. So the applicant did verify that there's an existing wood burning fireplace, uh, in the, the residence, um, and they would like to, uh, keep that wood burning fireplace as part of, uh, their proposed, uh, new residence. Currently, the city does not have an ordinance prohibiting, uh, wood, wood fireplaces, uh, so staff does support, uh, retention of this fireplace. Oh, and there's the proposed location. You can see that it's almost actually in the same location as the existing condition. So because this is final details, uh, you will get to see, uh, some of the, the colors and finishes proposed for the project, uh, so that the house, yeah, would be clad with stucco. You can see the proposed paint color. Uh, on the left, it's called Joe's White, um, and is a beige color. The applicant is also proposing some stone accents, um, as well as a number of wood accents. The windows are proposed to be, uh, steel framed, uh, and the roof material is a two-piece cabin pan clay tile. The proposed driveway paper, paver is a combination of brown, beige, and charcoal, uh, which is consistent with the residential design guidelines. Uh, as you can see on the right, uh, very little of the driveway is actually located on the property, um, so these pavers would be primarily, um, in the right-of-way, um, identifying the driveway approach to the detached garage. A final landscape plan was submitted and reviewed by the city forester. Uh, the city forester had a number of comments that have been incorporated as conditions of approval, and her comments included a less formal planting arrangement, uh, which is another design guideline principle. Also, that fifty percent of the plants visible from the right-of-way are California native. The project also has a tree planting requirement of one lower canopy tree and three upper canopy trees. If, um, all four trees cannot be accommodated on site, um, there is an option to pay an in-loofe of eight hundred dollars per tree. And then also, the forester has, um, indicated that any trees planted, um, underneath the power lines must have a mature height of less than twenty-five feet to avoid conflicts. So prior to the meeting, um, the staff did receive some comments from the neighbor to the west, um, and those include drainage, excavation, um, easements, and ADU zoning. So the concerns regarding drainage, um, these concerns were actually forwarded on to the architect, um, and he did respond in writing, um, and that response was provided to the, the commission as late correspondence. Certainly, staff understands concerns regarding drainage, especially when you're downhill, uh, from a property. The applicant is required to have his drainage system designed by a licensed engineer. All stormwater will need to be retained on site, um, and that system will be reviewed and approved by Public Works as part of the building permit submittal. With respect to the concerns regarding excavation, uh, a shoring plan is required, um, and that plan will be reviewed and approved by the building official, again, as part of the building permit submittal. Um, these are standard practices, um, that are required, uh, for, for all new development in Carmel. With regards to the easement, um, the applicant did provide some additional documentation regarding easements, um, on the property, um, and around the property. They did not find any evidence of a public access easement on Mr. Pabujiyan's lot. They did identify easements on the west neighbor's property for the benefit of the Pabujiyans to access the beach. There was also a concern raised that the development, uh, may obstruct some of these easements, um, but based on the information available, we do not believe that, um, any of the easements will be, um, impacted as by the project. And then with regards to the accessory dwelling unit, um, it will be required to comply with state law, as well as the California Building Code. As the commission is, is well aware at this point, uh, we are not allowed to exercise discretion over accessory dwelling units. Um, they are approved, uh, via a building permit only, um, but we will make sure that it complies with all requirements of state law. Uh, and then I just wanted to mention to, um, you know, the east neighbors had, had communicated some concerns about impacts to their whitewater views at the concept hearing. Um, staff didn't receive written comments, um, that did speak with both of the neighbors, and I believe they are on the call today, uh, and certainly can provide testimony, uh, on the, the height reduction of three inches. So with that staff's recommendation is that the commission approve the final design study with conditions, um, and certainly you can add, modify, or delete conditions as appropriate. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Don't see anybody. Their hand up. Okay, thank you, Marnie. Okay, uh, at this time, I'm gonna ask the applicant to make this presentation to the planning commission.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Yeah, my name is James Newell Smith, I'm the architect, and, uh, I will be speaking on behalf of Warren. I'm not sure he's gonna be available, he's got some important, uh, commitments, so we're gonna try to play a phone tag if absolutely necessary to bring him in. But thank you, Marnie, for that review, and, uh, we've worked hard to meet all of the conditions. Something that did come up late in the game was the size of the ADU, and I would just like to explore that for a moment if I could, on two fronts, and, and one is, uh, I'm not totally versed in the ADU law, I know that there's a twelve hundred square foot maximum, but my question is, is it limited to eight hundred square feet, uh, as a non-reviewed item, but could be possibly twelve hundred? The reason I ask is that this, the size of the ADU, of course, got enlarged by us complying with the requirements of the, uh, commission to eliminate the stair. So we feel a little bit penalized in that regard, but also, we, we did a very good job of not, uh, uh, creating any more impacts to the site by tucking it underneath, so there's no additional coverage for the ADU. And the size of it, whether it's eight hundred or the size we're proposing, really has no additional impacts visually from anywhere, so, uh, my question is, is eight hundred a hard line in the sand, or is this something that could be discussed? Because obviously, the client really does strongly prefer to maintain the size that we proposed. And the second, uh, piece of that is, if it does end up having to be eight hundred, is that something that we could work with staff to do and, and be conditioned on so that we don't have to come before the planning commission again? Other than that, I guess, uh, we're very happy with the project. We have reached out multiple times to the, to the neighbor to the west in regards to the easements. We have not been able to find any, uh, legal documentation that suggests there is one, um, so we're not trying to be restrictive in that regard, we just don't see one, and therefore, it's not on our site plan. So, um, I'm here for any questions you have, and thank you very much.
Okay, Marnie, do you want to, uh, answer that question about the size of the ADU?
Yes, um, so the way that the state law is written, detached ADUs can be up to twelve hundred square feet, um, but attached ADUs are either fifty percent of the, the primary dwelling, um, up to eight hundred square feet, um, or eight hundred square feet minimum. So that's why, um, staff had mentioned that regarding the eight hundred square feet. Again, this, that's not a discretionary decision, um, so that is something that we would look for at the building permit stage. You know, we currently do not have a local ordinance, um, but if it were the will of the commission, uh, you certainly could approve a larger, um, accessory dwelling unit. I'm not aware of anything in the state law that would preclude you from doing so. Um, and then, so with regards to the question about, you know, working with staff, um, so the ADU should not impact the commission's, um, ability to render a decision on the primary residence. We certainly would work with the We certainly would work with the applicant at the building permit stage with respect to the ADU. But certainly if you wanted to approve something larger than 800 square feet, it would be appropriate to do that as part of the project.
Okay, thank you, Marnie. Does that, does that answer the question sufficiently for you, Mr. Smith?
Well, it does. And it seems to leave a door open for our review of the size of the ADU is what I'm hearing from her. Did I hear that incorrectly?
As I understand what she said, the planning commission has the discretion to approve a larger ADU. We do not have the discretion to hold up the project based on the ADU.
Yeah, so I would, I would just like to reiterate that we've done a great job of minimizing all impacts of this ADU. And if this could be considered, we would greatly appreciate it in terms of the size we proposed. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Smith? Don't see any hands going up. Okay.
Actually, I got one. I've got a question.
Mr. Bolton, go ahead.
So I'm unclear on this easement issue a little bit. And I am just trying to get direction from you. Is there going to be public access alongside the property down to the beach like they're currently at?
So I don't believe there is public access currently.
Okay, so maybe it's not public then. Is there, okay, access to the, okay, then I guess it's moot, I suppose. I thought it was public access, so maybe not. There's no easement, I guess, but I don't know if it was established by tradition or people use it as public access currently. And so that was my question.
It's a good question, Commissioner Bolton. And to be honest, the neighbor expressed that that does exist. It's new to Warren and I couldn't find anything on that. And I don't know that I've seen anyone walking around in there. I don't know that Warren is specifically hard, fast set against allowing access. It's kind of a new question for all of us. So what our design does not do is block that access if that becomes something that we provide. But I, I don't know that I can promise that at this moment.
I was just curious about your intentions and I did notice that your site plan did sort of allow the possibility of it still. So that's why I asked.
Yeah, there is that possibility. I know that in some areas of Carmel, there is a significant strip of land allowing beach access. I'm not sure that's the case here. Maybe you guys can, Marnie can speak to that. Is that a typical condition here in this beach overlay area?
I am not aware of that condition being imposed. I, you know, my tenure has been five years so far and I have not seen that on a new development project.
Okay, are there any other questions from the commissioners or the applicant? Okay, I don't see any. All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the public for their comments. So do we have anybody from the public that would like to address this? I see Tricia has her hand up. You want to go ahead, Tricia? Just need to unmute yourself, Tricia. If you're calling, I believe it's star six. If you're on Zoom, they're down at the lower part of the screen, there's a unmute button. Okay, while Tricia's figuring that out, I'm going to go over to Bill. Bill, you want to go ahead? And we'll get back to Tricia when she figures out the unmuted.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. We just have a very brief comment. My wife and I live on San Antonio Three Southwest. So we're to the east of the project. We did review the green netting yesterday and conclude that the green is slightly lower than the original proposal in the rear of the home. However, the new proposal doesn't materially change the impact to our ocean waves view. Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia, as I said, if you'd like to unmute, star six on your phone or down at the bottom of your, the screen on the left-hand side, there's, put your cursor down there, you'll see an unmute option. So it doesn't seem to be making any progress on this. So is there anyone else who wanted to?
Oh, are you?
There you go.
Sorry. Issue with internet as well. Yes, I think that the, to answer the fellow that asked about the easement, there are a lot of people that go through the easement and that come from scenic. I just today came from down here up, but normally it's from scenic down. And normally it's locals. When I bought, Tim Allen told me it was an easement. I didn't look it up or anything like that. I just always used it. And they've always used to come down. I think it was from 1993 when the owner of this house had the Del Mar of the street condemned because part of it was done in 1954. And Madden and ourselves, and it had something to do with that access because that became part of our properties instead of a path that was Del Mar Avenue. And I have the documents from that time that were the city documents. But I think that's why the easement, but if, if I've talked to the architect and he said that Mr. Pabujian is a very nice man and it's whatever. So I don't think that's an issue. My concern, I mean, I was just thinking for my house, if a precedent is going to be set on this ADU size, then I would like to propose one for, that I will be working on for our house as well. I thought because we're in the sand, almost literally in the sand, that it would be dangerous. I certainly know that we've had drainage issues from the site above us over the years. The worst was in 2010. And I believe that they need to have redundant drainage in place, like sump pumps, like two sump pumps. We all know that electricity can go out here. And that the sump pump would start. And then the last thing we want is for the building to be on top of us. I think those of you who came today saw how close the new construction or the, the construction is to this house. We only have an easement in the back of our house and not a garden or a yard. So we're on top of each other down here. So those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? I don't see any hands going up. I don't hear anybody. So I'm going to close the public comments and open it up to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to start?
Yeah, I was just looking at my notes. Okay, so I've got a list here. Basically, I think this is a nice project. I'm not in favor of the solid wall in the front yard. I'd rather see an open fence or something like that. I saw it on one of the renderings or one of the drawings that was presented earlier, Marnie. Do you think you could bring that back up? I don't remember where Spider was, sorry.
I believe it was a solid stone wall.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there it is. So I'd like to see something open instead of that solid wall. That's just a simple comment. That rendering also makes the garage look very tall to my eye. It didn't look as tall on site, but that rendering really looks tall. But that's the other comment about that. I also discouraged the wood fireplace. I like the colors on this project. I agree with all the foresters' comments. And I have an additional comment that I think $800 for in-loof review is too low, but that's neither here nor there. I made my comment about the easement. I just was curious what's going on there. I didn't really understand it. And I guess I still don't because I don't think anybody does. But it seems like this neighbor is talking to his neighbors and so it shouldn't be too much of an issue. And the last thing is the ADU. And so I'm not in favor of increasing the size of the ADU beyond the standard 50% of the square footage of the above. I don't want to set any precedents. And I also just in general have concerns about ADUs in Carmel, especially their internal connections with houses. And although that's been removed in this case, and I appreciate that, of course. I don't think by removing that area, you just get that square footage. Basically, I think we have to comply with what sounds like the rules. That is one half of the floor area of the building above is what it sounds like for Marnie. And I don't know what that number is exactly, but it would be great if it were reduced to that size. And obviously, we don't get review or anything specific on that. So it will be just handled at the staff level. But those are my comments. Generally, I support the project with those comments and the general staff comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Lot, would you like to go next?
Sure. I would echo Commissioner Bolton's comments on this. That in particular, I think it's a nice project. I think that the color palette is very nice. And especially those tiles, I think, the colorful tiles, it's really pretty. And I would also like to see more of an open street scape. As far as the wall area, although I do know that there are a number of stucco walls and whatnot as you continue down the street. So that's not a deal killer for me. And I think the biggest concern I have again has to do with ADU size. And that I believe that the ADU should be compliant with the 800 square feet or 50% of total square footage. And that I think we need to stick with that. If you make an exception in one place, and as the neighbor has already said, we would be looking at another exception coming up. And I do believe that, yes, I think the ADUs in Carmel have multiple purposes. And that I think we should just stick with our guns on that one.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Allen, would you like to make your comments this time?
I'm sure. They're very similar to both my fellow commissioners' comments. I do like the design. I like the materials and the colors. I do, I would not approve, we're going to increase the size of the ADU. I do still have concerns about the neighbor's view. And was wondering if maybe I could get a little insight as to what was the three inches? Was that determined that that would actually correct the situation? Or, and then it didn't, or so I'm a little bit lost on that. I do have concerns for the neighbors on that topic. But otherwise, I would, everything else seems to be in line with staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Allen. With regards to the view, the, the planning commission, that, that, the meeting just gave direction to the applicant to explore ways to mitigate that view. So there wasn't anything specific other than explore ways to mitigate the view. So this is, the applicant has come back with this. So that was, that was the, the direction that was given at that time.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioner Dells?
Thank you. When we saw this before, I believe I was in a minority feeling that the loss of view to the neighbors was quite significant. And that's an entirely judgmental call that's put on us. Essentially, you know, one of our guidelines is to protect significant views. And Commissioner Allen, you didn't get to say that we're going to see those front porches. I would describe the current view as expansive, you know, horizon and lots and lots of ocean in all directions. The one specific piece of their view that will be, if not entirely lost, significantly lost, is a fairly small piece of whitewater view. And that, at the time I said, seems special. But I think part of the logic of having two meetings is to give each of us time to continue to reflect. And I know I'm still building my own standard even after 18 months of what is significant view. And I've literally walked by the house almost daily and think about it. And given what, that they could build a two-story residence from the front and they didn't. And they could have gone higher by right and they didn't. And they kept this house pretty low profile and it's really quite a bit lower than the neighbors on either side. And I'm sort of changing my position. I'm supportive of the height of this house. And I haven't heard, I didn't hear any objection to the height from, from previous commissioners. I'm with them on the ADU. It's, it's a little bit live by the ADU and die by the ADU. I mean, this is, it's a gimmick that is being used. In sometimes, that's not fair. Sometimes it's being used in earnest to house a separate family. And I think at other times, it's just being used to get a bigger house. And I'm not going to weigh in on what the motivation is here at all. The point simply is, the state has thrust this on us and told us we don't have any authority. And therefore I think we ought to follow them and whatever the state rule is. Now, until perhaps we can come up with our own ordinance that might overrule it, and I don't even know if that's possible. So I'm, I think they are stuck with the state's interpretation of ADU size, 800 square feet or 50%, which in this case means I think they have to go to 800 square feet. The fireplace, we have no prohibition against wood burning fireplaces. Therefore, I don't think I can make that a condition of approval. I would like to see us, by ordinance or however we do it, begin to eliminate wood burning fireplaces. I think we need to do that, but I don't think we can do that pal mall and randomly without support in our code for doing it. The wall at the front, I like it, but I think there's an ongoing theme here with me that I don't, I don't object to fences, walls, and gates. I think people deserve privacy and I think it's even more so on these streets that are so heavily tourist, touristed that I'm fine. And I think that wall is sort of, is fitting with this particular design. I think the design is very pretty. I like the house. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells. Again, I'm the last person standing here on this. Yeah, a lot of good comments. What I heard was two commissioners felt like it should be an open fence design in the front. I mean, our guidelines encourage that. That's what the guidelines say. They say that they encourage open fences in the front. I can't remember where Commissioner Allen weighed in on that. I don't know if she spoke to that. Did you, did you, you can just nod your head. Were you supportive of the open fence or were you not supportive of the?
Actually, I could go either way on that.
Okay, so you're, yeah, yeah, I, I, as a rule, like to stick with the guidelines. So I'm supportive of the open design. I don't think, you know, with the height of it, there's not like it's going to be, they're going to get any privacy one way or the other. And I think the point of the guidelines is to keep some openness and so we don't get these walled off types of situations in our streets. Traditionally, historically Carmel has had open, open fences in the front and not been walled off. There are exceptions to that, of course, but the guidelines have identified and encouraged the open, open fences. So I'm going to go with the guidelines. The ADU, my, my feeling is that if there's no impacts, you know, whatsoever, I don't, I don't really see what the difference is, whether it's 800 or it's 1,096. There's other, much more significant issues with ADUs. One of them is interior access. I think that allows owners to just get extra square footage, which they normally wouldn't be able to get. I understand the intent of the AD law of the state is to provide more housing. There's also an intent by the, the state legislature to undermine the R1 zoning. And that's pretty controversial, but that, that's the intent, whether you agree with it or not. So like I said, is my, in my mind, as long as there's not an interior access, they can't abuse that ADU square footage by just incorporating it into their overall square footage. And it doesn't have any impacts, you know, to the neighbors, or it's not increasing the footprint or anything like that. I don't, I don't really see the issue there. Most of what we deal with here are impacts. I don't see any impacts to the, to the street, to the neighbors from it. So I don't have a problem with it, but I think I'm in the minority here.
Michael, I don't know if you'd be willing to open up for discussion on that topic a little bit. I mean, we're
Comments, go right ahead.
I'm certainly not close minded to what you're saying. The you know, you've, you've seen me be very frustrated by the whole topic. So I try to figure out is great. In this case, you know, and as the architect said, some, some of this was was caused by us when we said remove the stairway. And I do think that that sentiment that, you know, that we're, we are consciously doing every thing we can to block you know, interior access between the ADU and the main house and force a separate entry into the ADU. And I, I think we're right there. I think we're correct in doing that, and we've been consistent in doing that. We should continue to be consistent in doing that. So what we've ended up here with is how, Marty, how big is the main house? Is it a thousand square feet?
The main house is just under fifteen hundred. And then there's the two hundred square foot detached garage.
It does not feel like a fifteen hundred square square foot house.
Isn't, isn't that a lot? Isn't it, it's a little less than four thousand square feet? Am I correct, Marty?
It's a solid four thousand.
Okay, there was another application, it was a little less. Had an ADU, okay. All right.
So you're not counting the ADU in that fifteen hundred?
No.
Yeah, we can't do that. We can't include it in FAR.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at this.
The only, the only comment, and I believe, I can't remember which commissioner made it, is the fact that if we do make exceptions, then it feels like we'll be continuously making exceptions after this. And, and I realize in this specific situation, it makes sense because of the fact that it, it works in the design. But, but I'm afraid that it will just continuously now be brought up in the future.
Well, I think we, we have expressed on many, many occasions, we don't operate under precedent. We look at each project based on its own merits. I mean, I, I mean precedent gets brought up all the time by applicants, but it's been stated many, many times by staff that we do not consider precedent. We operate on the merits of the project at that particular time. Which only makes sense too, because laws change. So they may be able to go out and get photographs of things that exist in the community, but those could have been approved under a different code, a different whatever. So we are looking at this application at this moment in time. And it, under the laws that are pertain to it and to whatever discretion we have. And for myself, it was explained by Marty that our discretion, we could make it larger. And I don't see any impacts. Like I said, my main concern, most of what we deal with here are impacts to the, the community neighborhood, and also maintaining character of the community. And also doing interpretations when there's some gray area. So if there's no impacts here, that's why I could, could support this. But this is open for discussion. I mean, I, I think the other commissioners that spoke against it should probably weigh in on it and make their arguments. Mr. Bolton, you want to jump in?
Yeah, so basically, I don't disagree with you, right? The commission and City of Carmel just decide if we want essentially the entire footprint of every house that comes before us to have an ADU the same size underground. Because that's where I see this going, because that's the way to maximize your square footage. And therefore make more money in the City of Carmel, which has extremely restrictive square footages on the property. So I feel like we should follow the state rules. We have rules at state level also, just like we have rules at our local level. And the state rules currently say that fifty percent of the floor area can be, you know, also used as an attached ADU. And so I'd go with that for now, until we have a city ordinance that modifies that in whatever way. And there could be a large discussion had, that should include the public about what we really want to see in Carmel, because all these decisions have extremely significant impacts on the future development. And I don't see, if I was going to develop a house right now in Carmel, why I wouldn't make an entire footprint-sized ADU below my main house. I can't even imagine why I wouldn't do that. So that's my concern. And I think that's pretty clear, and I don't see a ton of argument against that position unless you can prove to me that people are gonna, for some reason, build smaller houses, which doesn't make any sense. So I think we need to follow state rules for now, and then when we have our own rules, follow those rules. That's it.
Commissioner Lot.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Bolton just summed up exactly my thoughts on this. I really would not want to see us taking a different path when we don't have any specific local guidance. And I think that that the state rules are in place, and they're in place for a reason. And I could certainly see a lot of people taking advantage of larger opportunities. And I think that that may or may not result in more housing or or opportunities for people who live and work in our town. And I think that we should just follow the rules that are in place right now. And the city wants to allow those in the future, that that should be part of our future design guidelines and whatnot that we're looking at.
Well, I think, I think Commissioner Bolton has made a pretty strong argument here. And I, I can't, I really can't argue against that. So I think I think he's convinced me that we should stick with the eight hundred square feet. So are there any other issues on this application that we need to discuss? Can you guys still hear me?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right. I didn't, my, I got an unstable internet thing. I wasn't sure you could even hear me there for a minute. Okay, all right, yeah, let's, let's
All right, I, I
Want to go over the before we did that, just, just the we have the standard conditions. There are some special conditions on this. Number thirty-one is a pre-construction meeting. Number thirty-two is the chimney. I didn't hear any discussion about that from the commissioners, other than the, the wood burning fireplace, but it doesn't seem like we have discretion to make that place that condition on there. Number thirty-three are the informal plant arrangements. Marty explained that. And thirty-four are California native plants. And then thirty-five is the right-of-way landscaping. So those are the special conditions.
Hello, this is Rick Villa Fuerte, and I joined the meeting kind of late. I actually thought it was at five. I was just wondering if you discussed the plans for Mission Three Northeast of Tenth.
We are not on that. We are not on that.
No, sir, we have not yet.
We have not yet, so just that'll be coming up. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so Commissioner Lot, you were in the
Before, before you go there, just for the benefit of the neighbor to the west, there, there's nothing in this resolution about addressing drainage. And some pumps and a lot of the questions that she had. And Brandon, I'm, I'm, I'll look to you on this, but I, I think the message to them is, that's not what we address at the planning commission, that that is a standard part of building permit?
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Dels, you're correct. We require that of all applicants. All, all of them have to pass certain drainage requirements, and we sign off on plans, engineer drainage plans. So we, we got that well in hand at the building permit stage.
So the drainage and shoring was, I think, the other major concern. And that really that is, that's the domain of professional engineers. And it's, and it's a standard.
Yeah, that, that takes place during the building permit part of it, so although it's, it's a very valid concern, and it's good to bring it up so that she, the, the neighbor understands that it will be addressed during the building permit application. And she will have an opportunity, she has an opportunity to review those plans at the building department. And she can have her own professional review those to make sure that it meets her concerns. So Commissioner Lot, did you want to continue?
Yes, I move approval of, now I gotta find it again. Sorry. Let's see, this is DS twenty-one dash two nine one Pabujian. That we adopt the resolution approving the final design study and associated coastal development permit for the project located at Scenic Road Three Southwest of Ocean Avenue. With the caveat that the ADU must comply with the state law regarding square footage, so it would be limited to a maximum of eight hundred square feet. And that, that the resolution and special conditions be adopted.
I'll second, but I think we need to make a correction. Because yeah, the eight hundred square feet is the minimum that you're allowed to have for, for an ADU, as I understand it. And we're talking about constraining it to one half of the floor area of the residence.
No, I think it's one half, one half of the floor area or eight hundred, whichever.
Eight hundred is, is eight hundred the maximum or the minimum? That's what I understood.
That is the maximum. Is that correct, Marty? Or half?
It's the minimum that we must allow.
Okay.
So whichever is greater in this case, because if this foot square footage is slightly under sixteen hundred square feet, they still
Yeah, eight hundred would be greater, so. But yes, I'll let our planners fix that.
That's the minimum.
Yes.
So it has to be a minimum of eight hundred or a maximum of fifty percent of the floor.
Correct.
A correction.
Should we just let this motion defer to the state definitions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion to, as I understand it, accept the resolution as presented by staff with the special conditions as per staff with no additional special conditions in this resolution. Is that correct?
Yes, other than the square footage, yes, of the ADU.
Do we have a second?
We have two.
Yes, go ahead. I think Chris did it.
All right, we got a second. Okay, so we have a second. So is there any further discussion regarding this motion? Okay, hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Lot?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion to approve the final design study is carried. Thank you. Okay, the next item on a public hearing tonight is another design study. This is design study DS two-two dash one four three. This is a Coria project's consideration of a concept design study for the construction of a two thousand fifty-seven square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a five hundred ninety-two square foot attached accessory dwelling unit located on Mission Street Three Northeast of Tenth Avenue in a single-family residential zone. We have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair LaPage. So the Coria project is a vacant lot on the east side of Mission Street. It is just under four thousand square feet at three thousand nine hundred ninety-six. The city forester identified fifteen trees on or adjacent to the site during the preliminary site assessment. Eleven coast live oak trees were all rated significant. The trees rated not significant include two acacia and a dead pine tree. And those have been approved for removal. The planting requirement for this project is going to be three upper canopy trees. The applicant has proposed some select limb removals to accommodate the new construction. And these will be considered by the Forest and Beach Commission at their meeting tomorrow. The city forester does support the limited limb removal that is proposed. But should the Forest and Beach Commission not approve the limb removals, the project can be adjusted to retain those limbs. So the project is a proposed two-story residence. It would be just over a thousand square feet at the main level. It would have a two hundred and nineteen square foot attached garage with a two hundred eighty-nine square foot second story above. The project also includes a five hundred and thirty-nine square foot basement for a total square footage of two thousand fifty-seven. The applicant is also proposing an attached ADU at five hundred and ninety-two square feet, and it would be located on the lower level at the rear of the residence. So with respect to privacy, originally, the south-facing deck was proposed at three hundred and thirty-eight square feet. I apologize, there's no graphic on this slide. The deck was proposed to be expanded to five hundred and eighty square feet with a modification to the accessory dwelling unit. The deck is set back six feet from the south property line and fifteen feet from the rear property line. This could create some privacy impacts both to the south and the east neighbors. Staff is looking to the planning commission for some guidance on whether the size of the deck is appropriate. With respect to mass and bulk, the project is a combination of one and two-story building forms. At the front of the residence, the single-story plate height is at the maximum allowed at twelve feet. And it has a ridge height of sixteen feet four inches. The two-story plate height above the garage is eighteen feet with a ridge height of twenty feet seven inches. The roof form is five and twelve pitched hip roof with one foot eaves throughout. And the proposed roof material is a two-piece Mission Barrel tile in rustic Carmel. The applicant has provided some finished details at this stage. So the planning commission is, is, can weigh in on colors and materials. The home is proposed to be finished with stucco with stone accents along the front and then wrapping around on the sides. Again, the tile, the roof material is a barrel tile roof. The applicant is proposing aluminum clad wood windows, wrought iron balcony railings. And the applicant has submitted specifications for fixtures. All of the fixtures do not comply with our current standards. So he'll be choosing alternate fixtures at final details. With respect to public comments, the south neighbors have been working with the applicant on a number of issues. They would like to preserve the common boundary along the south property line that separates the, the two properties. They're asking to preserve the existing elevation at the southwest corner of the project site. They believe that this, this, this berm that is currently there protects their home from drainage that flows down Mission Street. The applicant has expressed an interest in working with the neighbor to preserve those elevations to the best of his ability. The south neighbors also were requesting a six-foot tall privacy barrier on the south side of the deck. Their bedroom windows are located on the north elevation of their home. So this would afford them privacy. They've also been working with the applicant on a proposal for a seven-foot tall fence along the south property line. And this would be a six-foot solid fence with one foot of framed lattice on top. Staff is looking to the planning commission for guidance on whether a taller fence in this location is appropriate. It is within your authority to approve fences greater than six feet tall. The neighbors also concurred with the exterior lighting, asking for it to be shielded to prevent light filter. And then also expressed some concerns about the location of the lift station and the proximity to their Um, and then also express some concerns about the location of the lift station uh and the proximity to their house. Uh, I know they've been in communication with the applicant uh regarding this. Uh, staff was also contacted by the neighbor to the east. Um, this neighbor has expressed concerns with regards to privacy. So the natural topography of the project site results um in the uh the proposed. House looking down into the private space of the east neighbor. Um, his concern is that there will be views uh not only into his outdoor living space, but also the bedrooms at the rear of the house. Um, and a concern that a fifteen foot rear setback um is not uh enough separation. There was also a concern expressed regarding uh removing any of the oak tree limbs. Uh, the oak tree canopy does provide for some um. Privacy between the properties filtering views, um, and he would like to see uh the oak trees retained. And with that, staff's recommendation is that the planning question accept the concept design study. And that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the commissioners for staff?
I I've got one, Chairman.
You have a question, Commissioner Delves, go ahead.
Yeah, please, Marnie, I'm I'm still not entirely understanding the deck. Um, because I I don't see anywhere anywhere in renderings or plans. So I really don't understand where it is to even be able to comment on whether it's too big. And or too close to the neighbors.
And I apologize that the graphic did not show up um. In my presentation, so let me. Share my screen with the plans. Uh, so the design of the deck and the A D U has been evolving ever since the story poles were installed. Um, and the conflicts with the tree limbs uh were discovered. So if you can see my screen, um. This was the original proposal, so Mission Street is off to the left. Um, the A D U at the back of the house was proposed to be two stories. Um, and this is the south facing deck. That was about three hundred and forty square feet. When the applicant realized that he had conflicts with significant limbs. He. Redesigned the A D U to be a single story A D U with a flat roof. And then expanded the deck over the A D U. So the A D U increased or the the deck increased to about five hundred and eighty square feet um under this proposal. Um, the applicant is aware of the the concerns that the neighbors have expressed with regards to privacy. Um, so we're looking to the planning commission to provide some direction on whether this deck is too large. Um. How it should be reduced, um, and then appropriate um privacy screens for the benefit of the neighbors.
Thank you.
Any other questions for uh Marnie regarding this application? And the commissioners? Okay, thank you, Marnie, appreciate it. Okay, is it, would the applicant like to uh make their presentation to the commission at this time?
Uh, good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
All right, Commissioner uh LaPage and uh Chair LaPage and Commissioners, my name is Ephraim Coria. I'm the uh property owner and um. Other than what Marnie um already covered, uh, there's a couple of things that I would like to share with the, you know, with the committee. Uh, the project, the house, you know, is three bedrooms, I just want to emphasize that. The two story component of the project is under three hundred square feet, so I think from my perspective, it's. You know, a one story with a small portion of the square footage um um on the second level. Um, I also want to mention that the main house, I know that my neighbor on the east side has some concerns. Um, but the main house uh does have a setback of over twenty uh feet. Um, when you factor in the A D U, which as Marnie pointed out, has now been uh modified to be um. One story, um, we we, of course, you know, have a closer distance, which is currently fifteen feet. Um, I am open to uh reducing the deck. Um, if the commission can provide some guidance in terms of. You know, what the appropriate square footage might be, that would be helpful, or if that could be. Uh, deferred to staff, um, you know, that that would also, you know, that that would be greatly appreciated. Uh, bottom line is, you know, I'm really trying to accommodate, you know, the privacy concerns of my neighbors. Um, I'm trying to minimize the impact on the trees and the limbs, and I think for the most part. Uh, we are going to be able to do that. Um, there are probably a couple of minor limbs that I think, you know, would be impacted, but I think in terms. Of the diameter, I I think they're probably even below that the 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 threshold. And that's something that I think is going to be uh reviewed by the um. Uh, commission tomorrow, so I'm going to be onsite again there. Uh, in terms of the um. The project, the house, um, it's basically, I guess, the way I like to think about it, Spanish style, you know, old world look. Um, it just using a lot of, you know, earth toned colors uh and materials. Um, and let's see, what else? The A D U, because it it is attached, it is um. You know, under eight hundred square feet and uh or less than fifty percent of the main dwelling, so I just want to point that out as well. And I'm open to, you know, any questions that um. Uh, chairperson or any commissioner, you know, may have, or, you know, the public at large at this point.
Okay, are there any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Coria?
Can I put a question back to staff, Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
So I think we just heard that the state definition of A D U says it's a minimum of eight hundred square feet, and this one's below the minimum.
Yeah, so in this uh circumstance, um. Fifty percent of the floor area of the excluding the garage would be nine hundred and nineteen square feet. Um, so the applicant could propose up to that much, um, they are only proposing five hundred and ninety two only.
I think, I think, um, if I can add to that, so it's the that eight hundred. The eight hundred square foot number is not a requirement, like you don't have to build an eight hundred square foot A D U. That's just where the city's authority sort of caps out, so if somebody wants to just have a five hundred and some odd square foot A D U, that's, you know. That's their prerogative, we don't, we, it doesn't have to be eight hundred square feet to be considered an A D U.
I'm confused, but, okay.
Should I try? Maybe a different way?
So. If if maybe it's just maybe it would be helpful, I'm I'm sorry, I don't want to side side the line everything.
It, I mean, it is, um, it is, it's it's a challenge for for us um to implement this, but. You know, if the existing home was a five hundred square foot cottage, fifty percent of that home would be two hundred and fifty square feet. State law is saying currently they can have up to eight hundred by right. In this particular case, the proposed house um is much, you know, it's about eighteen hundred square feet, so. You know, they can have fifty percent of that, which would be nine hundred. Um. So it's like an eight hundred minimum or up to fifty percent of the house.
Got it, I do understand now, yep, thank you.
So it's an either or?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. It is confusing.
Um, I do have a question for um the applicant or Marnie um on the design, I couldn't figure out, how tall is that front door?
Um, it's uh eight feet.
Okay, all right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, open it up to the public for their comments, I believe we had uh. Gentleman called in, wanted to comment on this, he was concerned about where this was on our agenda, is he still here? Can't remember his name, he told us his name.
It's Mr. Villa Fuerte.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, everybody, um, I'm still here. Yeah, so um, yeah, I heard everything that uh was presented, um, are you hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, so uh, thank you, thank you, Ephraim, for um, you know, those comments. On the redesign, um, I was just curious on the setback. Is the setback with the the deck still uh at fifteen feet?
That 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 is correct.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's kind of a concern for me, uh, just because you'd have, uh, you know, the. The proximity, as I had mentioned in my uh email comments, um, you know, it would be. Very close and having people basically standing above a a roof, a single story roof. Um, or possibly higher, because it's actually above sloped up from my property. That would, you know, definitely, I think, be a, you know, kind of a a privacy issue. Um, so has there been any any thought in uh moving the uh the setback? Uh, or creating more of a setback, maybe similar to the uh the property under construction adjacent? Which is at, I believe, twenty four feet.
The the commission will discuss that during our discussion. Is, I guess, is that all your comments? Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you for your comments, okay.
Uh, sure, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who want to address the commission?
Mister Chairman, I'm Jerome Politzer, and I'm the uh neighborhood to the neighborhood of the south. We were there onsite and uh my comment is concern privacy related to the bedrooms, which are uh. At our northern boundary, the southern boundary of the applicant's parcel. And uh I wanted just to uh uh say that um we've worked with Ephraim to. Work through some of the issues, uh, and we are working through those issues, I believe, that was submitted in writing uh by me earlier and are part of the agenda packet. Uh, there are two that I like to focus on, though, and um. Commissioner Delves, I don't understand the deck really either, so I'm with you on that, and uh. It has, Marnie, as as you've, as staff has stated, it's been evolving, and that's something we'd like to work through. Um, I I favor a smaller deck. Uh, as as far as uh part of the development, if that could happen, uh, that would be my preference. Uh, the appropriate size is something that uh hopefully we could get a better uh uh. Vision of, I don't have my mind's eye exactly how big the deck is that's being proposed. Um. I do also, uh, on the deck, there there appears to be in a more recent uh uh. Graphic that you presented of the plans, that a portion of the deck uh extends into the six foot. Right away or setback that you're trying to uh have between the two parcels. And uh, I'm I'm not clear on that either, there appears to be uh most of the. The deck is six feet uh from the property line, there seems to be uh the stairs or something else where it's three feet from the property line. Those are all points of clarification, I'd I'd like to um get flat on, so I can see in my mind's eye what is the uh, what's truly being proposed. But um, generally, uh, uh, things are working out, privacy is our main concern, uh, and I wanted to uh. Reiterate Marnie's comment regarding uh the privacy fence on the property line. There is a portion of that uh along our our house there, we'd like to have at seven feet, if that's something within the uh commission's discretion. Uh, that would be, we feel that would be appropriate. And that those are the extent of my comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any else in the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Okay, I don't see any hands going up, I don't hear anyone, so I'm going to close the uh public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Um, Commissioner Dells, would you like to begin?
Yeah, sure, um, first off, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Coria and all the neighbors. Um, sometimes we don't see uh neighborly cooperation in action. Um, and that makes our job a lot harder, um, so we really appreciate it when uh we know it's happening, and in fact, it was happening right in front of us this afternoon, and we appreciate that. Um, the um, in in general, I I like this house. Um, I think you're gonna, it'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood. Um, although Commissioner Locke may disagree, since she won't be able to walk her dog there anymore. Um, but, um, you know, this is one of the one of the last remaining empty lots in town, um, along with the one next to it. Uh, difficult lot, and um I think you're gonna build it, looks like you're gonna build a nice house. Um, the, let's see, um, I'll go to. What, in terms of trees, limbs, et cetera, I'm going to defer completely to the forester and the forest and beach commission. Um, as we typically always do, and yet we are a little out of sequence here, I think that's fine, in this case, they're going to look at this thing tomorrow. And uh the applicant will have some more clear marching orders as to what what's possible with the trees. Um, it was clear to me that. The vast majority of those oak trees are going to be there forever, or for a long time. Um, and that we're talking about a limb or two, um, or maybe three, but um, it's it's not a significant cutting. Um, except I know the neighbor was concerned about that, um, on the deck, um, I I think it is too big. Going completely over the A D U, and I think we should just be driven not necessarily by square footage, but by privacy. Um, and um, I don't know, I don't think we're going to solve it today, because it's going to have to be solved before the next meeting. Um, but um, as I think about the deck, it is an important feature for this house, because you don't really have much usable outdoor space. Um, and we all need the vitamin D and the sunshine, and this is your opportunity on this house to get to get that, it's a south facing deck. I think one of the things you might want to study, Mr. Coria, is where is the sun? Um, and, you know, I'd be open to positioning your deck so that it um is out of the trees, if possible. Um, and, you know, and exposing to to some sunshine, um, for the neighbor on the east. Um, I understand the request about changing the setback. I I don't think you need to actually change the setback of the A D U, I do, but I do think you could just. Move, you could set back the edge of the deck. Um, your deck is going to need to have a railing around it anyway, um, and if you could just move that railing, I'll say four feet. Further to the west and not not have it right on the edge of the A D U, if you will, but just a little bit further west. Um, that would keep people from being able to peer down into your neighbor, I, and I. I don't have line of sight on this, because I couldn't climb a tree and do it, but um, that would seem to be a solution on that side. On the, what is it, south side neighbor, um, I think screening will accomplish. What you're looking to do, and I would be supportive of. In that case, I think you were just looking for perhaps a six foot screening screening element, um, and um. If that solves the problem, I'm supportive of that, um, as to the seven foot fence um between the properties. I am also supportive of that as described by um. By Marnie, um. That's all, that's it, good project, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells, uh, Commissioner Bolton, you want to jump in?
Yeah, sure, thank you, Commissioner Dells, I agree with basically everything you said, um, I want to add to that one thing. I also agree with the maintaining of the berm at the uh, what is that, southwest corner of the property. Um, that provides some good uh screening and actually um reduces the impacts to the neighbor to the south. And so I'd like to see that remain, and there's some discussion of that. Um, I also agree with the seven foot fence being acceptable and helpful to the neighbor to the uh south again. I want that seven feet, though, to follow the grade, obviously, not seven feet at the top, and it gets as tall as it gets. Um, besides that, the branches are fine with me to be removed, I used to be on the forest and beach commission, I would have approved that. Um, but I I don't see any impact, and if they can change it, if the forest and beach commission objects, then we don't have a problem at all. Um, I'm glad of that, that end, though, I'm glad that the A D U is one story, there's no way you could have made that one that A D U two story without having a significant impact to the trees, and a much more significant impact to both the neighbors, so. And that just leaves the fence, about the fence, the um deck, so Marnie, could you bring the deck graphic up, please? So we always have to balance uh designing for you and giving good helpful direction. And so I'm going to try and do a little bit of that right now, so there are impacts in my mind to both the south and the east neighbors from this deck as shown. So, there are impacts, in my mind, to both the south and the east neighbors from this deck as shown here. And so I would prefer to see two things. I prefer to see, um, if you look at the lower left-hand portion of the, uh, deck where that dimension is, I think it's a three-foot dimension, it'd be nice if that line continued to provide additional, no, up, up one more, this right there. I'd like to see that line continue across the left, all the way to the house. That will provide enough screening, I feel, for the neighbors to the south to accommodate their, you know, concerns about views in the bedroom and whatnot, and their whole reason we put the fence in, um, we don't need to look over that fence now. And then to the south, I mean, to the, um, east rather, right? Um, I think that we need to reduce the, uh, extension of the deck all, to not be all the way over the ADU. I don't know where to stop it there, I leave that to the discretion, of course, of everybody who's doing the design work here. But the fifteen-foot setback from the building should be extended further. We're not gonna do an actual setback adjustment, but what I'm saying is that we need to increase that distance for the deck. So the deck could be somewhere maybe, say, twenty-four feet from the property line to the west. That's not a direction, it's just a comment. So, perhaps you could look at this, and when you come back to us, you can give us some kind of analysis on how a reduction on this deck would improve the, uh, you know, impacts to your neighbors, because I think, obviously, uh, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that you're working with these neighbors, and so I think there shouldn't be any kind of problem at all. So, uh, I support the project, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Um, Commissioner Locke, you wanna make your comments?
Sure, I don't have much to add. I thought, uh, thank you, Commissioner Bolton, those were very thoughtful comments on the deck situation. I think I completely agree with that. Um, and I'm just a little curious on the entrance to the ADU. There are steps that go down, but then it appears that there may be about a four-foot grade reduction between the bottom of the steps and the landing to the front door of the ADU. Um, and whether I'm correct on that or not, it might be something to look at a little further. You may wanna take down, take down the grade just a little bit more, put some more steps in. Um, and I think that, yeah, if the deck is moved back, I think that completely should, uh, satisfy the neighbor to the east. Um, and then I thought Chris's suggestion about the neighbor to the south and how the deck could be arranged to, to push it back just a little bit from the south neighbor would be helpful. Uh, this is a tricky property, and, um, fortunately, the fence that was put in between the properties to the east and these two properties that are currently under development seems to have made a real big difference on privacy issues. Um, the only other comment I had was that the, um, ADU steps out onto a raised kind of patio area that'll, with the retainer, um, retaining wall. And, um, I don't believe that will have an effect on the east neighbor, but, um, not really sure how, how that looks, because it does appear that there's, um, what was it, that there, there is some significant grade, obviously, and if someone stepped out on that retaining patio area, whether or not there would be an impact to the neighbor to the east, um, I just, I couldn't tell from what we did today. So I'm kinda looking forward to seeing what happens with the Forest and Beach Commission and what ends up coming out of, uh, the project as far as final plans and design, and, um, and I think we can address any other, uh, concerns at that point, but it's, it's a nice project. And, again, Mr. Coria, I think that, that you're working with the neighbors is, uh, much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Uh, Commissioner Allen, you wanna make your comments?
Uh, sure, they're very similar to the other commissioners. I really appreciate, uh, the, their willingness to accommodate and work with the neighbors. Um, love the, I, deck ideas from Commissioner Bolton, I think that that would be great. I do believe that the one-story A- ADU is a lot more appropriate, um, for this project. And, um, and I would also agree with the screening and fencing, um, suggestions that were made. And then my only last comment is, uh, to ensure that the guidelines within the, um, uh, like, appropriate to scale and, um, uh, not exaggerating certain, um, design elements in the front. Um, I would, uh, I would recommend that, so that would be my last comment.
Is that as relation to the front door, Mr.?
Yeah, yeah, that, um, just my, um, first impression of the rendering and also the, um, plans. Um, it looked a little bit off.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, Commissioner Dells, wanna add to that?
Um, I already spoke up, Michael.
Oh, okay.
Can I, uh, add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner, Commissioner Locke reminded me of something I had a concern about when I was looking at these plans, and that was this retaining wall in the rear yard that supports a deck or just maybe retained, whatever, for the ADU, so it was a step-out area. Well, I certainly don't object to a step-out area. Um, that wall could be very tall, four or five feet. So I, I'm concerned about having something raised that high, that close to the, the fence line, and so I'd encourage these owners to speak with the neighbor, uh, to the east and then discuss this and, uh, resolve this prior to our next meeting. That's it, thank you.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner Bolton. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with all the comments that have been made. Uh, I think it's a good project, they're working with the neighbors, there's a couple of privacy issues. I support the seven-foot fence. Um, I su- support, Miss, uh, Commissioner Bolton's guy, uh, guidance on cutting the, uh, deck back on the, uh, south elevation. I would recommend also, on the inside northeast corner of the deck, I would just take that line straight over and make an outside corner there with the line that Commissioner Bolton suggested. That would, that would pull the deck back significantly, and I think that would mitigate the opportunity for looking into the backyard of the east neighbor. As far as that lower patio, it looked to me like that fence was gonna hide most of that, but, uh, I don't, I don't think anybody coming out of that ADU could, could see over the fence. But obviously, there are some concerns on that steep grade about having a, a retaining wall there, and, um, when this comes back, it'd be nice to have a, I don't know if we have a section view on that or not, but maybe the applicant could, could provide a section, uh, of that, uh, that patio. So other than that, I don't have any comments, uh, those, those are my comments, so, uh, we have a resolution. Bring that up real quick.
I think a site section would be really helpful, Chair LaPage, that'd be a great idea.
Okay, all right, good, that's a good direction.
Especially if it included not only this lower deck, but potentially the upper deck as well. So you could just get a profile of the side of the building and showing the nature, showing the grade. That could be extremely informative.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. So on the next, uh, that's some, uh, direction we wanna see when this comes back to us for final.
Chair LaPage, okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Dells.
Uh, Commissioner Allen brings up an interesting thing on the front door, and I'm looking at it now, that hole.
I agree.
So, yeah, what, what?
I think, I think it needs to be a standard-sized door. I think eight-foot door is, uh, getting out of the human scale of this building. I mean, the rest of the building is very nice appro- uh, proportions, but that is, uh, out of scale, and it's sort of a grand entry, and our guidelines discourage that. So I would, I would encourage the applicant and, uh, sounds like the other commissioners too are encouraging to, uh...
Agreed.
Yeah, especially with that transom window above it, that really does have a, a grand kind of feeling, so I would encourage reflection of that overall, that.
That's some direction to the applicant for the final.
Thanks.
Okay, so, uh, we have, uh, standard and, uh, recommendation draft conditions. First one is the archaeological significance overlay district. Uh, the cultural resources, that's also their overlay they're in. Uh, planning requirements, number three. Number four, uh, south-side yard deck railing. Prior to the final detailed review, the applicant shall provide a dimensioned railing plan including elevations identifying the location and extent of wrought-iron railing and stucco walls.
That kinda sounds like the site section.
Yeah, that, that does, but it could be stated a little clearer. Uh, number five is driveway pavers, that's pretty obvious. And then six, a volume study. Seven, right-of-way stripping plan, striking plan. Uh, eight is a fencing plan. Uh, it sounds like the commission is all in support of the seven-foot high fence along the south property line. And then, uh, number nine is a lighting plan and product information, and ten is, uh, site coverage reduction. It's, it's not a whole lot, it's only two square feet. So, uh, I think that should be easy to comply with. So, based on that, did, did, does someone wanna make a motion?
I, I can move that, I'll make a motion.
All right, okay, Commissioner Dells?
Um, I move to, um, approve the resolution that's been provided us to about, to us by staff, um, accepting a concept design study for the construction of, um, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave out the square footage, because it may be changing, but the construction of a residence and attached accessory dwelling unit on a vacant lot located at Mission Street, three northeast of Tenth Avenue, um, with an additional, um, condition, uh, of reducing the size of the front entryway. Um, which, which includes, which includes the door and the transom, the whole thing.
And also, uh, reducing the size of the deck as per direction from, from the planning commission this evening?
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, is there any, anything else? Locke, did you have a?
Yeah, do we wanna say something about the size, the, the height of the door?
I, I did, but just to reduce the over, the overall size of the entryway, 'cause I didn't think it was just the door, I thought it was the door, the transom, the roof, the whole thing.
Okay, so do we have, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, accept the concept as per staff's resolution with the recommendations and draft conditions and the addition to, to redesign the, uh, front entry to bring it more into human scale, lower it down, and to redesign the deck to make it smaller, to mitigate impacts to the neighbors to the east and south. Is there anything else that I'm missing? Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion is passed to accept the, uh, design con- concept. Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, okay, that brings us to the next, and I believe the last item on the public hearings tonight, and this is a, uh, design studies, DS 22030, the WIT projects, consideration of after-the-fact design study application associated coastal development for grading in excess of twenty-five cubic yards, expansion of the lower-level living area and associated site improvements located on Carmelo, two northeast of Ninth Avenue, single-family, R1 district. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair LaPage. So the planning commission, uh, originally saw this project at the July thirteenth meeting. Um, it is a combined concept and final design study. The planning commission continued the project, uh, with direction to both staff and the applicant. Uh, commission requested a narrative and timeline of the sequence of events, uh, for the project, as well as a project data table, uh, and additional information on whether the revised project meets the site coverage requirements. Uh, the third one, uh, was whether or not the, um, additional foundation work had been inspected. Um, and then the commission also requested a tour of inspection of the project site. So the applicant has provided a narrative and timeline. Uh, this is included as attachment four. Staff also prepared a timeline, uh, from the, uh, initial stages of the, the planning application through construction, and that is included as attachment five. Uh, staff also prepared the project data table, um, for the project as revised. Uh, it's included as attachment six, um, and the revised project does comply, uh, with our site coverage standards. Staff also met with the building official, um, and confirmed that the foundation work has been inspected. Um, the special inspections were completed, and the appropriate documentation was submitted, um, and accepted by the city. And this information is included as attachment seven. Uh, and then today, we conducted our tour of inspection at two forty-five, so the commission was able to see the project, um, that's currently under construction. So just a brief recap, um, of the project revisions. Uh, this slide shows the approved condition, uh, and the location of the grade along the south side of the lot. Wow, that's very large. Um, and this is the, uh, constructed condition. The red dash line shows what that previous approved grade was. Um, and then you can see the, uh, the new foundation for the ADU dining room, kitchenette, and then a bathroom for the main residence. So the municipal code does require a tract-to-design study for any grading in excess of twenty-five cubic yards. Um, as approved, originally, the project included four hundred and fifteen cubic yards of cut and ten cubic yards of fill. With the revised project, uh, the cubic yards of cut increased to six hundred and ten with twenty cubic yards of fill. The residential design guidelines do encourage minimizing the extent of excavation and fill. Uh, this is primarily for the protection of tree roots. Uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, uh, the fifty-two-inch pine in the backyard, uh, was, uh, in decline and ultimately removed. Uh, so there's no longer a need to protect the root system, um, of that tree. The residential design guidelines also encourage minimizing the mass, uh, building mass as seen from the public right-of-way or adjacent properties. Uh, and this is, uh, to balance the goals of encouraging more floor area below grade, um, with minimizing excavation. Uh, the revised project does not change the view of the residence from the public way. And lastly, the design guidelines encourage avoiding abrupt changes in grade between the site and adjacent properties. The guidelines encourage sloped-planted areas, and a smooth grade transition is preferred. Staff, um, uh, is still recommending, uh, that the backyard be terraced. The elevation, uh, has been lowered by six-point-five-five feet. Um, and there's currently a retaining wall, uh, in the backyard with a three-foot fighting strip between the top of the wall and the property line. Uh, that's what's shown here in these photographs, which were supplied by the applicant. Um, staff feels that in order to, uh, achieve the residential design guideline intent, uh, that additional terracing, uh, of this area, uh, would be appropriate. So again, uh, six feet, staff feels is an abrupt change in grade. Um, and we continue to recommend terracing with additional landscaping to soften that transition. So the recommendation is to approve the combined design study with conditions, and of course, the commission can add, modify, or delete conditions as appropriate. Uh, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, are there any questions from the commissioners for staff? No, hear any? No hands going up? Okay, thank you, Marnie. I see Eric Miller's here. Eric, you wanna make your presentation to the, uh, planning commission at this time?
Yes, uh, thank you for, uh, uh, giving us the opportunity to, uh, present, uh, our timeline and, uh, answer some of the questions you had at the last meeting. Uh, Marnie, can you put up the timeline that we prepared, please? Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you good.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, that, that's all right.
Just one second, um...
And I can start talking about it while she's looking for it. Um, so the project, uh, originally, the application for planning was in January twenty-fourth of nineteen. We worked through the planning process, uh, and were, uh, uh, lucky enough to get the, uh, planning approval. planning approved August 14th of 2019. We started the construction documents in December of 2019, and we finished the construction documents in June of 2020. So this was all designed around a tree. So if you look at the, if you look at the first part of the, the first blue line represents the planning. The second blue line represents the building. And then the the tree removal permit is the next red dot. We asked for a tree removal permit because two years earlier, we'd had the tree reviewed and it seemed to be in good condition. But the tree, right around this time, right, right in October, lost two major branches that crashed into the neighbor's house, broke the skylight in their master bedroom. And so we were all very worried about the condition of the tree. So we called Frank Ono to review the tree, the the tree specialist, and he felt that it was in major decline. So the city forester also reviewed it and agreed that it was in major decline. So we were given a permit to remove the tree. So after we removed the tree, we made an application for the temporary shoring. The temporary shoring was applied for March 4th of 2021, and and it was granted June 9th of 2021. So with the temporary shoring approved, you know, and it is true that we, that the builder before the temporary shoring permit was issued did begin the shoring, but we, we were able to work with the city and and get the shoring approved. So we were on our way to finishing the project based on the original plan approval. State law changed at that point, so the state of California, of course, now all of a sudden allowed ADUs. So my client wanted to put the ADU in, so we did make an application for the ADU August 31st of 2021. And at that time, we were learning a lot about ADUs. I think staff was, the city was was figuring it out. So all of us were trying to figure it out together. So, you know, we we worked through the completion of, we started with a with a JADU and we realized we couldn't do that. So we had to do and modify that into an ADU. And so after we completed the application, Marty reviewed it and said because of the 25 yards cut, that we would need to do a design study. So that was fine, and she also wanted to be volumetric, so that was fine. And this has nothing to do with staff or us, but it did take 10, 10 and a half months to get through that because we were learning about the ADU. So your last meeting, we presented, we thought we were only going to be talking about the 25 yards, but obviously you wanted more information, so we prepared a timeline. So Marty, can you put up a sheet one that we prepared? Red number one in the upper right-hand corner? Yes, that's it. So this is the original, originally approved plan. Everyone saw today where the mechanical crawl space was going to have a four-foot, 11-inch-high ceiling. So we could put a mechanical in there. We were going to backfill that partially and frame a wood floor so we could put mechanical and get power and water and gas and everything to it. The crawl space that you can see here next to the stair, that was higher because we thought the roots from the tree would would impact that crawl space. So we didn't want to, you know, you know, we wanted to be able to, you know, you know, keep the roots intact. And so that's, that we, that's why we designed it this way. So the only structural drawings that we prepared were the ones in the original set. So Marty, can you move to page three? So there's page three. So this is from the original set of approved construction, structural drawings. And so if you look at BS1, if you can show right there, yes, and BS1 also occurs above, Marty, yes, those two. So so the next, if we go to the next sheet, Marty, that's sheet number four. That shows the section there. So you can see the mechanical room areas where the slab is, and then there's that retaining wall there. And then there's that crawl space area there. But the idea was where the crawl space is, we would be able to accommodate any roots from that tree that were moving into that area. So, you know, this is why we designed it that way originally, but we designed this before we either had the grading or the temporary shoring permit or before we had the tree permit to, you know, remove the tree. And you, Marty, can you go to the sheet five? Please, thank you. So this is the crawl space area that we were trying to keep in, you know, higher so that the tree root could survive. So if you go to the next page, six. So you can see how big the tree ball was. That was just the part we actually pulled out intact. There was a lot of roots. It was a major tree. And and so you can see why we would try to design around that. Okay, so can you go to sheet seven, please, Marty? Okay, so this is the approved shoring, temporary shoring. This is typical for every job we do that has a basement in Carmel or anywhere else for that matter. It's all about health and safety and waterproofing and and just making sure that we're able to build the project before we turn around and backfill the areas. So if we go to the next page, Marty, that's sheet eight. So this, this was the intention of the original permit. The idea was that we would backfill the two areas where the mechanical room was and where the crawl space was. We thought the tree would be there, but obviously we moved the tree. So the, so what what you see today, the red hatched area is where the backfill has already been done. And what we're asking for today is not to require us to backfill the area where the mechanical and the crawl space are and not backfill the area where the the blue area is where the tree was, so we can accommodate an ADU down there. It was very difficult trying to, you know, change the direction of the project to include the ADU, you know, halfway through the project. So, you know, we, we are, we are here today to ask you to allow us to build that ADU and hopefully to have the yard accessible for the, for the ADU unit.
Okay, Eric, that's, are you, are you through with your presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Eric from the commissioners? Commissioner Locke?
Yeah, Eric, if you were to backfill the back area as it was supposed to, supposed to have been originally.
Yes.
You could create an entry to the ADU, I'm sure with some kind of a retaining wall right at the stairs that go down to the ADU.
Yes, you, you could do that. We get, oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm just asking. And then as far as the the area that you have downstairs that's open right now that you want to enclose as in addition to the ADU.
Yes.
And which opens out to that patio area that you are looking for. That could be also enclosed and filled and and you could do something with that. Is that not correct?
Say, say that again, the area.
You could, you could potentially put in some kind of a light well or something there to provide light to the ADU area.
Yeah, so Stephanie, if you look at the sheet one that I provided earlier, maybe we can put that up. So part of the original approval was to ramp that up right there. So those retaining walls shown there, those curved retaining walls that come out of that area were our original sloping up. So we weren't going to do a light well. We were going to slope it up there. And then the reason we wanted to do that, because we wanted to keep the tree at the higher level. If you go down there, that was the whole point of slope. Otherwise, we would have proposed originally to have that lower. But we were trying to respect the tree at that point. That's, that's why that ramps up right there.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for Eric from the commissioners? I don't see anybody. Put their hand up. Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. Let's see here. So is there anyone from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? I don't see any hands going up. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I'll open it up to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Dells, you want to kick it off?
Not really.
You can pass.
You know, let me pass on this one, if you don't mind.
That's fine, that's fine. I just select you guys arbitrarily, just to kind of get things going. Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
Um, well, I think I may have just kind of shown my hand on that. I am disappointed that, and even looking at the timeline, I think the timeline shows that that tree was removed before the house was demolished. There was a lot of, obviously, far more grading than anybody and far more removal of dirt there than was anticipated. And I think Marty, in her presentation, the residential design guideline 3.4, avoid abrupt changes in grade between site and adjacent properties. And if that is not an abrupt change in grade between the two properties, I don't know what is. I'm kind of in favor of having that all filled in and basically bringing it back to the way it was before this unfortunate incident occurred. And that's really my comments.
Eric, thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I mostly echo what Stephanie just said. Essentially, we have too much grade removed in the back, and we have this walled effect, and we have a very nice sized backyard, but it violates our, our design guidelines to the point where I can't approve it. So I would like to see that revised. I don't know if I should go back to how it was because that was an acceptable design or something in between. I don't really know. But I think that needs to come up. We need to bring the grade back up and fill that area. And I'm sure we'll find, you'll be able to use those spaces inside still without any kind of issue. Otherwise, I don't have any issue with anything else. But I just can't approve with those walls in the backyard, vertical walls essentially. And the amount of the three-foot planting area is insufficient. It needs to be far greater. And I don't really have a great idea for a design for you, but you're very creative, so I'm sure you've got some wonderful. Thank you.
Marty, can you give me some clarification here? The, we're not, we're not considering the ADU here. What, the focus of this is just the, on the grading?
So in creating the ADU, they moved floor area to the south side of the house. So you're considering the additional excavation, the addition of floor area on the south side of the house and the redesign of the backyard.
Okay, so that, so some of the floor area has been relocated to accommodate the the ADU. So we're focusing on the the grading amount and the refocusing, the relocation of the FAR, the floor area, right?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. I just wanted to get that correct. I was a little, little confused on that. I, I hope that helps the commissioners kind of focus their comments, too. So having, having said that, do the Commissioner Locker, Commissioner Bolton want to? That, that changing your comments or you're, you're good with what you said?
Not really. I don't have an issue with the interior spaces being reconditioned or relocated. We're within the data table works, so there's nothing to object to really there. I have an objection to the backyard. That's it.
Okay.
And just to comment on that, I don't really have any issues with that either. The only thing that I would say is I'm really unsure why what was formerly the mechanical room has now become a bathroom, when it looks like if you're adding square footage, that that would have been a place to reduce that downstairs square footage and maintain the bathroom where it was originally supposed to have been.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Allen, you want to make some comments?
Um, yeah, so I'm, this one's confusing to me pretty much and and I've just been a little bit like stumped along the way on them. Something has to be done with the backyard. I don't know what that creative solution is, but there has to be some terracing or filling in where to the original design. Like, I guess, I'm similar to Commissioner, Commissioner Bolton, I don't know the answer, but I, I, I can't approve it the way that it is right now. And then in terms of interior, I I saw so much already completed that I, I guess I'm okay with what's already been done there. I honestly, I, I will defer to the other commissioners on this one because this one's really hard for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Dells?
Yeah, thank you for letting me listen to my colleagues there. Yeah, this one's hard, too. And, you know, I look at the timeline and certainly this applicant encountered a perfect storm of things. And from trying to save a tree and plan around the tree at a certain elevation to removing that tree and a lot of elevation with it. And combined with the opportunity presented by the ADU, combined with probably lots of pressure from the pandemic. And I was involved in a project with a similar timeframe, just as an investor. And, you know, the city laid off most of the planning department and or sent them home and really all, all public process kind of, well, not a public process, but the, you know, staff processes ground to a halt almost for a year. And, you know, there were no PPP loans for people trying to build homes, and the banks weren't forgiving on construction loans. And it, it was a very, very difficult time to be building a multifamily home, a multifamily development, and I know that's what this applicant went through, so I, I have sympathy and empathy for the situation. But it, it also does seem like the process was not always clean or perfect in terms of asking for permission instead of forgiveness. So I think my colleagues have gotten to the right point of focusing on the backyard and really saying, okay, the ADU is now there, the, what was previously a half a mechanical room and a crawl space. Are there the opportunity for them to be there? I, I can accept that it was created by removing that giant tree root because that's where it was. But so by now focusing on the backyard, I, I, I agree that the status quo is not right. It's not, it's not consistent with the design or with, with the our development code. But I think we need to give more guidance. I mean, what, what staff has suggested is an addition of a terrace. I think that's a minimum. Just, I just think of my own grandkids playing around up, you know, in a place like that. That's, that's quite a drop as it is. So I think that along from a safety standpoint needs to be mitigated. And the staff's recommendation of terracing, so adding a, I think they said a three-foot wide terrace around that helps. Commissioner Bolton did not feel that was adequate, and maybe we just have, if, if this is where we're going, I guess this is the conversation we need to have a little more of is, okay, what is an acceptable outcome? And at Commissioner Locke's request, the applicant Eric showed us what was originally planned. And maybe that's what we need to go back to, which was, it appeared that that Um, and maybe that's what we need to go back to, which was, um, it, it appeared that that um, that room where we were standing today on the um, northwest corner of the lower level, um, was always intended to be at, it might, I'll, I'll let Eric address this, but at that current grade, and then it was intended to go up fairly abruptly. Um, so maybe we can focus more on that as a, a, uh, as a potential outcome. I think that's it, I'll leave it at that, and Michael, look forward to hearing from you, and then maybe we can hear again from Eric.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, I just want to say first of all, I appreciate the fact that we had time to get to figure out the timeline, because I think we, the first time this came to us, we were getting a little bit off the track there, and it doesn't, it seems to me that there was always a good faith here to try to get things done. But there was a lot of stuff happening that the, the uh, you know, the applicant was dealing with, and uh, a lot of it was outside of their control, but I think there was always good faith, I think. Seeing the timeline has, has uh, district, uh, showing me that there was, you know, always good faith here, I don't, I don't have an issue with that anymore. I mean, a lot of time, we've had some of these things come to us recently, where people are just blatantly doing stuff, you know, to violate what we, was approved, and, and this isn't, isn't the situation at all. So I just want to get, get that out there, and I want to thank the applicant for uh, and the staff for providing with that timeline, and I think there was good faith here, so. So it really just gets down to, like I said, the uh, relocation of the floor area, and then the grading in the back. And uh, it doesn't sound like any of the commissioners have any problem with the relocating of the floor area or the ADU, it's just really the big issue is this this abrupt change of grade we have in the back, and, and it is an abrupt change of grade, I mean, as, as Commissioner Locke said, it's, it's the very definition of it. And so I, I think staff has, has come up with, I'll, I mean, I don't know if it's a great solution or, but where, but the terracing, I think is the way to go, I think that's the way to deal with this, you know? I don't want to, I don't want to penalize these people because they've been operating in good faith. They're just trying to deal with, you know, uh, a tree that died that they were trying to save, which created a huge grading change back there. Uh, the pandemic, which really slowed everything down. And, 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 uh, and then the, the change in the ADU law, you know, and they have every right to take advantage of that. And so, um, I think really the, the only issue I see is this abrupt change, and I think the terracing is the way to, to, to handle it, I mean, um, you know, I mean, if, if, uh, if, 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 if the commission doesn't feel that the three foot offset is enough, or maybe there needs to be some sloping or whatever, you know, let's give the applicant some direction, and he can bring that part of it back, and we can move on from these other, other issues, though, as far as the relocation of the floor area and, and the ADU itself, you know? And, and I don't, um, I, I don't know, how's, how's the commission feel about that, I'm just going to throw that out there. I think I'd, di- direction we should give the, at this point is a combination of terracing and maybe some sloping or whatever, you know, to, to mitigate this, this abrupt change, because that's, it seems like that's what we're focusing on here, and that's what we have to deal with, so.
I like that suggestion, I just didn't know if there was enough space to appropriately terrace and slope down to um, the, the ADU, I don't, I'm, I mean, maybe someone else can speak to that, but it, it didn't feel like there was enough space for that, but I don't know.
Yeah, my comment was more about how I don't think terracing, uh, it constrains the, uh, the design too much also. I don't, I don't have a great solution for how to do something like accommodation of filling and terracing. Um, I don't want necessarily go back to the same old design, but I think the grade should probably come up some in some areas, and it should probably uh, come down less abruptly, but I don't unfortunately have a great way of doing that. And like, I totally appreciate the chair's comments about the good faith efforts of the architect and everybody involved here, I don't, I don't think anybody was trying to do anything uh, untoward in the backyard, but we are left with this very difficult unsightly situation where we have a, a very tall wall defining the backyard of this, and it just, I just don't know how to make it look good. And so I don't, I don't want to constrain the design by saying it has to be terraced. Although terracing might work great, if it does, I'm fine with terracing, I just, and I, but I'm afraid terracing is going to eat up a lot of the square footage back there, I think, that's why I think some kind of initiative filling and terracing might be better, but I say, I don't know. So I, I don't, I don't have a great way to give a kind of direction. Um, other than that, I don't, I don't want to make them terrace it, that's all. But I don't have a problem with terracing, that's what I do.
Anybody else want to make some comments? I'm, I'm proposing, we leave it open to the applicant, to, to, you know, we've got this abrupt change. It's the applicant, you know, Eric Miller, the architect, is the designer, I mean, the architect. It's, it's up to him to see this, you know, thing that's been identified, a finding, that's been identified, and to come up with some type of a solution, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm confident he, he can do that. Uh, and I think, uh, you know, I mean, they have a given amount of space down there, there's no I mean, that, that, that amount of space could be developed in some way to mitigate the abrupt change and still have some usability for that ADU down there. Um, is, is, is it my correct that the ADU is the, is the air, the, um, that is going to have primary access to that area? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, only the ADU will have access to that area.
So, uh, that kind of defines the parameter of your problem, Eric, and then, um, you know, we're not the designers, we're just, we just point out that, you know, the findings and, and where the uh, the deficit is, you know, that needs to be taken care of, and um, I, you know, I think, I, I, I feel like it's enough for the planning commission to, to give them that direction, I feel like from Commissioner Bolton's comments, that, uh, I mean, he's, you're a designer too, and I think what you're struggling with is to come up with the design in your mind. But, but what you're saying is, it needs to be addressed in a combination of ways, and, and that's direction. You know, it's not necessarily a solution, solution is, is for the architect, but I think you, you know, you, you're, you're just kind of struggling with your own uh, normal way of problem solving when you've come up with these things, you know? You can't help yourself, it's just, just part of your, your, your nature, you know? So, um, so I know, that's, that's how I feel about it, but if there's any more discussion on it, I'm glad to hear.
Chair, Chair, I'm, I'm looking at the, at the special condition that's in the um, resolution, I'll read it. Um, prior to the issuance of building permit revision, the applicant shall submit a revised site plan and landscape plan to the community planning and building department for review and approval. The revised plan shall incorporate terracing in the backyard and include additional landscaping to soften the abrupt change in grade between the project site and adjoining properties.
Sounds pretty good.
That's pretty wide open in terms of.
Yeah, sounds pretty good, I think it leaves, it gives the applicant uh, the creative ability to address this issue in pretty much any way you want, within those, you know, within that, that guidance. So do we want, do we, you want to go ahead and make a motion, Commissioner Dels?
Yeah, I'll go for it.
You want some more discussion, Commissioner Bolton, you can?
No, I was just going to say I agree with that, that's great.
Okay, all right. Mr. Dels, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, sure. Um, I move to approve the resolution provided to us by staff. Approving, uh, an after the fact concept and final design study application DS two two zero three zero uh, for modifications to design study approvals DS one nine dash zero four six. Um, including grading over twenty-five cubic yards, expansion lower level living area, and associated site improvements located on Carmelo two northeast of ninth. Um, with all conditions as is, no additional conditions.
Okay, do we have a second?
I just wanted to, um, so there's no additional um, uh, conditions around um, the landscaping plan or the um, the terracing or anything?
It, it's just the, the condition as stated.
Okay.
The one I read, which is sending it back to
Gotcha.
To the, to staff to work with the applicant.
Okay, I second, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion made to accept the resolution as per staff, made in second, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, I appreciate your help. Bye bye.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the uh, public hearings this evening on our agenda, so we have the director's report next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, pretty short report tonight, yep, thank you. Uh, we're actually going to get you home and out of here before dark tonight, which feels weird, but here we go. Uh, ADU ordinance is in process, you know, it's apropos to what we talked about tonight, so we have a a draft that we're working on right now with our city attorney, um, working with Evan, Evan Court and myself, who are, are starting on the draft, and so we'll, we'll hopefully have that here to the commission here in the next few months. Um, because we, we recognize that it's something we need to do. Uh, so keep an eye out for that, we have a lot of really fun long range planning initiatives going on, I think I shared those last time, that's just one of them. Um, speaking of long range planning, the next Design Traditions uh, one point five community meeting. Uh, we've pushed that back to the end of September or early October, if you recall, it was originally going to be end of August, early September. Uh, the reason we did that is we got so much great information from the community workshop, the online survey that we've done, our steering committee, and then just general emails and phone calls, because we're really, we really are taking everything in from the community. We need another month to put together that uh, direction slash strategy paper to share with the public and make sure we're on the right track, so that's coming up uh, at the end of September, early October. And then following on very quickly from that, we'll be at the city council and then to this commission that same month. Uh, just to bring you the same information, because this, this is when we're going to start bringing in the uh, the, the public hearings uh, to the process, so look forward to that. Uh, you all know wireless ordinance is coming to you next month, uh, and we are going to do our best, as I've said, to um, uh, stop cell phone towers in Carmel neighborhoods. Uh, on several occasions, we're going to do our best to meet their requests for one month, I don't know if we're going to get them a full month, but we're definitely going to give them more uh, than the typical time, and it, it's definitely going to be more than two weeks, so um, I think that should be adequate time to review. I'm hoping it'll be out soon, though, we do have a draft, and we're just finishing that up with our, our attorneys right now, so uh, keep an eye out for that. Um, I believe I reported this uh, in the Friday Letter, and there was a nice article, uh, thank you, Mary Schleif, in the uh, Pinecone. You know, we are taking an increased uh, posture on enforcing short term rentals in the village now that I have a second code compliance coordinator. Uh, that includes weekend coverage, um, so we are, we are proactively going after those, you'll probably notice in your packet this week, the uh, the monthly community planning and building report includes now pulling that out so you can see where we're at. Uh, it's kind of shocking year over year, you know, last year, for the entire year, we had about eleven. And already at this point in time, we're more than double of that in this year, we're not even, you know, barely halfway done through the year, so. Um, definitely an uptick in those, I'm not entirely sure why that is, um, there's probably, some of it's related to COVID with other people. Uh, you know, now people are out traveling, so folks are trying to take advantage of that, or uh, you know, people are, are moving out of their second homes to go back to their places of work, maybe that's, but we just don't know, but there's definitely an uptick in short term rental, um, so we are taking a more proactive stance on those. And then the last thing, just to make you aware of, our beach fire pilot program uh, will be on the September city council agenda. Uh, we're going to talk to them to see what they want to do, it's going to be sort of like a red light, green light, thumbs up, thumbs down conversation, because uh, at the end of September, this year's pilot program ends, and that's the end of the pilot program for now. Obviously, all of the years of the pilot program have still been during COVID, so we're going to be asking city council the question, you know, end the pilot program, continue it, uh, other options, you know, we want to just decide what we want to do and apply for a permit at the coastal commission. Um, so we'll be asking them again for direction, there's no decisions being made on, on what, you know, formally what the pilot program is going to look like, it's sort of like a next step for the pilot program, so uh, keep your eyes open for that, that'll be in September at the city council. And that's all I have for you this evening, unless you have a question for me.
Any questions for Brandon? Okay, looks like uh, we are adjourned, I want to thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Bye, everyone, take care.
Thanks.
If I don't see you sooner, I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right.